Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, December 4th, 2023 at 5:45 PM, and I will call to order the Free Town Board Select meeting. This meeting is on Zoom, so I am going to now read the Governor's Healey's order. This meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom. On March 29th, 2023, Governor Healey sign into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extend the expiration of the provisions pertaining to open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue to hold, uh, holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Free Town Board Selectmen will be conducted in person as well as via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines, guidelines for remote participation by members of the public body can be found on the town of Free Town's website, freetownma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the, uh, to the meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed and entering the meeting ID listed below, or by going to the link and entering in the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public body can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website and YouTube channel an audio or video recording, uh, transcript, or other comprehensive record, uh, proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
I'm not sure you said that as a new boy.
Yeah, so yeah, so to cover our bases, this meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. So today, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following reasons. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the, of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do, Lawless v. Town of Free Town. Number two, Mass General Law, Chapter, uh, 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do, Margaret Wilkinson v. Pedro Ferreira, TMMA Realty LLC, Town of Free Town, um, Symphony Rezekovic and Adolf Rezekovic. And finally, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open, uh, meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do, Macumber v. Town of Free Town. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Now in executive session. All right, so we are now back in open session from executive session. Uh, we now have a public hearing. I'll read the notice. So this meeting was continued, uh, to December 4th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. The original notice is November 21st, 2023. Public notice, Town of Free Town, the Free Town Board Selectmen in conjunction with the Board of Assessors will conduct a public hearing relative to selection of a residential factor that will determine the percentages of the tax burden to be borne by each class of property for fiscal year 2024. This hearing will be conducted at the police station, Community Room 15 Monroe Drive, East Free Town, Mass 02717, on Wednesday, November 29th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. This meeting will also be available virtually. Meeting information is listed below. Uh, this meeting information, further gen- information will be posted on or before the close of business on November 27th, 2023. Free Town Board Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, Jersey Zager, and Carlos A. Loebz. All right, do you guys have to open your meeting?
Yes, you gotta come back from the recess.
Uh, make them, uh, like to have a motion to open up our meeting again from the recess.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're back on.
You might have to do.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do roll calls because Mike's on Zoom. Is he there yet?
He's on.
Okay.
Mike, can you hear us? Mr. Motta, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Excellent.
All right, so now you're. We're gonna do a roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we gotta do the roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All say the yes. Okay, we're good.
Awesome. All right, so let's get right into it. So every year, it's me trying to relearn how this table works, but.
So, as I've mentioned in the past, you have a whole bunch of different numbers. That second column, uh, which says residential factor at the top of it. Uh, obviously, none of us are crazy math whizzes. That number is meaningless to everybody, but the state thinks that that is the most important number you will ever see in your life. Uh, and that's the number that you're actually voting on tonight. You will be picking one of the residential factor numbers. Those work in concert with the shift number, which is to the left of that, and that determines what percentage of the tax burden will be borne by which class of property. Residential is a class unto itself, and then commercial, industrial, and personal property is the, the other class. So the line that you have highlighted in gray, that is the shift that you selected last year, the 1.595. And if you were to leave the shift exactly as it is, then you would see if you carry that across, um, to the two columns that are, that say difference at the top. If you left the shift alone, the average residential bill would increase by $236. The average commercial bill would increase by $44. Obviously, everybody that's sitting in this room is a residential taxpayer, not a commercial taxpayer.
Yeah. That is true.
So, um, as the shifts get smaller, in other words, as they move up toward the, uh, top, toward the 1.5, the residential class bears a higher burden. As the, uh, shift gets greater and moves toward the bottom of the page, the commercial and industrial and personal property bear the higher burden. 1 point, excuse me, 1.75, which is the bottom number, is the maximum shift. That is the, the most that you can do. Then along with that, you have the other sheet, which gives you just some general highlights. Couple of, couple of ways the shift has changed in the last, say, four or five years, and some benchmarks that have gone along with that. So, uh, then this year, fiscal '24, and next year, '25, have a lot of things happening all at once. '24, this is Stop &amp; Shop's last year of their TIF. Fiscal '25 will be the first year that Stop &amp; Shop, that Stop &amp; Shop right now is assessed at 99% of their value. Next year will be their first year at 100%. Next year will be the first time that Stop &amp; Shop ever pays a personal property tax because the old form of TIF completely exempted personal property from the duration of the TIF. That's, that's not a thing anymore. Amazon doesn't get that benefit. So in fiscal '25, aside from the fact that Stop &amp; Shop will be at 100%, and they'll start paying personal property, Amazon's TIF will reduce from 75% to 50%, so they'll be kicking in quite a bit more. That will also be the year that we start paying toward the Bristol Plymouth High School, which, um, 30 years is a long time.
Yes, it is.
So I would imagine, historically, the shift has always favored residential to some degree. Next year, you're probably gonna take a good, hard look at that to try and reduce the Bristol Plymouth burden from the residents, especially in a year when the businesses are gonna be paying more. But this year, fiscal '24, uh, you have the, the chart that's before you to decide what you'd like to do now, uh, before any of that becomes a factor.
All right. Thank you very much. That's.
Sure.
Very informative.
Very well spoken.
Only took three or four years. Now I have an idea of what I'm talking about.
Mr. Motta wants to speak.
Yeah, if you don't mind, um, just another point to add to what Mike had said. The percentage of tax, um, that's borne by the residents, you see in the upper left of that, um, big spreadsheet.
Yep.
The R percent, 79%, and CIP, Commercial, Industrial, Personal Property, is almost 21%. So there are far more residents' value and, and tax amount being paid, that would be paying that increase. So just to point out that if you, um, increase that percentage to, let's say, 1.62, that would give you a more even increase as far as dollars per year for the average of each of those tax-paying groups. But the residents will still be paying considerably more total.
And that's a little unavoidable, just because, as Mike said, we just have so much more residential property than we do commercial property.
Makes sense, yeah. And then, so the Amazon and the Stop &amp; Shop changes, right? That should impact this percentage breakdown between, like, the total value, or will not?
It should because.
In the future.
Um, I mean, if you look at those numbers Mike was just giving you, the 79% for residents and the 21% for commercial, industrial, personal property. Stop &amp; Shop paying personal property tax in fiscal '25, that's gonna change that percentage considerably.
That helps, thank you.
If you've been through Stop &amp; Shop, they've got some expensive stuff over there.
Just their banana, their banana room. It's gotta be worth tens of millions.
I waited until after they showed me the banana room to address personal property with them, so that I could see the banana room.
I think about that banana room a lot. It's amazing.
It is. It's crazy. But that will, and Amazon, um, so Amazon, you've got to remember too, it's built across the town line. So take the total value of Amazon, and this is what we in Fall River do, is we value that as if the entire thing was in one town or the other. So we treat it like it's all here. They treat it like it's all there. We then have to break it down by where it really is. So you take that total number, we only get 40% of the total number.
Gotcha.
And at the moment, we're only getting 75% of 40% of the total. So next year, we'll get 50% of 40% of the total. But, um, that is another big expensive place, so that's, that's gonna help us quite a bit. So that's, I would be, I would be surprised if you didn't see, um, a few percentage points change over there.
Yeah.
So again, like, like this year, if you left the shift alone, that gray line tells you what it is. Next year, if you leave the shift alone, um, residential will still make out a little bit because commercial's gonna go up that much more. Plus, who knows what else may come over the next year. Copart was a really big surprise a couple of years ago. You never know when another copart's gonna just pop up out of nowhere. Probably unlikely, but you never know.
Yeah. Has this, I mean, and I don't expect you to know this offhand, but like, has that, the, uh, breakdown between residential and commercial, has that been growing more towards commercial? Or is it consistently kind of been this, uh, you know, 80/20 split?
I don't actually know.
Well, I can tell you.
Well, Mike might know. If you had a last year's chart, you'd know.
Well, I can give you some comparison to last year. That the increase in residential assessed value for all of residential was 6.1% from '23, fiscal '23 to fiscal '24. And the increase in total commercial was 4.2. Industrial went down by 1.2, and total, and personal property went up by 18.3. So there was some considerable increase in personal property. The total increase, personal property was about 16 million, commercial is about 3 million, but then that's a wash with the industrial went down about the same amount. So the increase last, over last year in value was 16 million approximately, whereas the increase in residential was 98 million.
Gotcha.
Residential properties are, a lot of, a lot of the way that we value property is market-driven, and residential properties are still selling for crazy amounts of money right now. We have still.
That affects everything.
Right. I mean, we still have, and I'm, I, I know the room that I'm speaking to right now, and I know where everybody lives, but I think we can all agree that we should not be having as many million-dollar properties in a zone of Bay Shores as we do recently. The idea that people are paying a million dollars or more for quarter-acre lots is, is crazy.
Yeah.
But it's, it's still happening. And it's not just happening there. It's happening, um, Heaven Heights might be the closest example in East Free Town. We have million-dollar sales going on there too, and a few years ago, that would have just been unthinkable.
I remember last year us talking about this, and you also bringing up the fact that this tends to linger behind the market, right?
It does. So we run about 18 months behind. So while things are going up, people like that because the assessed value is not what the market is. If and when things start to go down, that's when people aren't gonna like us very much because it's gonna take 18 months to catch up again.
And if I could just make the point that, um, this is a, a common misconception from, for the average person, that the value of the property, whether it goes up or down, I hear this all the time. People say, well, my property values are going up, so my taxes are gonna go up, and that is, that's not how it works. So the property values go up and down, and the tax rate goes up and down, the opposite to make up for it, because the constant is what we need to collect for a levy. So given a particular levy, the amount that individuals will pay would be the same regardless of what their value is because overall, we're gonna make that adjustment in the tax rate. But to your point, our, we use this year for fiscal '24, we use sales from calendar year 2022. So we are always at two years behind the fiscal year. But as Mike says, it's more like a year and a half because we're doing the work during the, during the prior year.
And, and I know Mike, uh, Motta made the point last year, and I'll say it again. Town meeting drives a lot of this because we, we collect more money when we spend more money. So, um, you know, sometimes people will come in for an abatement, and they'll say, my taxes went up too much. My taxes being too high is not a reason to file for an abatement. My property is not valued correctly would be the reason. But the taxes are gonna be dictated by what people vote to spend.
Yep.
So.
One I'm surprised by here is, uh, the single-family home average value, right? 500,000. That, that makes sense to me. I'm surprised how low the commercial property one is. It's 639,000.
So with the commercial, um, some of that is dictated by lower-valued commercial areas. So for example, you may have a home business. You're gonna have a personal property account. The personal property account, the value might only be $500 or less because they may think that you just have a laptop computer.
Yeah.
So you could have dozens of $400 personal property accounts, but you're not gonna have dozens of $400 houses. All, and, and also that's, um, because you have such a higher percentage of residential property and such a variety in the value of the residential property, the commercial is a much smaller pool, and, um, the ones that are real estate tend to, tend to be in that same expense category.
Yeah.
It's interesting though, to Trevor's point, that you would think just, you know, the Stop &amp; Shops and Amazons of the world would drive that number to be much higher than that.
Right. But. I think like, it'd be interesting, interesting to see like the.
I don't question your numbers.
Like the per-square-foot value, that's something I think would be interesting. Not, we don't need that for this decision, but that kind of standardizes it.
Right.
All right, so any other, like, now. I guess, is there a recommendation or, I mean, or any kind of input on what you guys are thinking? I know this is a, this board's decision, right? But, uh, you know.
So the assessors as a board didn't make a recommendation, typically do not, but did in discussion earlier, um, just observe that the shift of 1.615 is the point where the increases in the two classes are relatively similar. They're both around $200. 1.62, again, keeps them in the same ballpark, but benefits the residents a little bit more because the resident, the average residential bill goes up about $45 less. And then, I don't remember the context, but the number 1.64 had been thrown out at one point also.
1.64.
Right. Because then the residents are still getting, you know, the residential bill on average is going up about $40 a quarter at that point. The commercial bill is going up about $100 a quarter at that point. And that's, again, that's the average, so that's your $500,000 house. Somebody's got a $300,000 house. It's gonna be less if they've got a, one of these random million-dollar houses, it's gonna be more.
Yeah.
I want to favor the residents, obviously. I also don't wanna run out businesses. I don't think that, you know, I think a little business is more than I think of the Stop &amp; Shops and Amazons of the world. I shouldn't be throwing them out, you know, but.
Yeah.
I think it's a, it's a fine line to walk, right? There's no easy decision with any of this stuff.
Oh, it is. You know, you drive around town, whether you're in a zone or East Free Town, you see the businesses with the lights on, and the parking lots are full, and people are out there spending money with new restaurants and different things. So you definitely wanna promote that growth of mom and pops, right? Unfortunately, they kind of get grouped in with the Amazons and Stop &amp; Shops, right? There's no, you know, fifth, you know, fifth tax rate out there just for mom and pops, which would be fantastic if they were. Well, you're right. There's gotta be some balance of residents because it's gonna go up a little bit with, with BP and everything else in a couple of years. But we also wanna, again, moms and pops, we don't wanna drown them in any additional, additional bills. So somewhere in the middle is, I think we're all discussing, right? And so it's the happy medium there.
Yeah, you know, I think that round that 1.62 mark, right? Because that, you said would be about an even, or maybe we go.
So the 1.6, 1.6150, I think is even, is pretty even, right? 200.
206, 203, yeah.
That's the closest to an even amount that you're gonna get, and you're gonna start going, uh, a little bit further apart. Is it the 1.62 is?
$40 difference.
Yeah, it's gonna favor the residents a little bit more, but it's still in the ballpark.
That's where I wanna.
Yeah, I like that one.
1.62. Because I think we're giving a little bit to the residents, but we're not really like, like, sticking it to the businesses, right? Like, I mean, there's gotta be a balance in my eyes. It's probably gonna have real tough decisions next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that's what I think we're all looking at. Next year's gonna be a decision-making year because, you know, the tax is gonna go up, right? Because we've got BP, right? So, yeah, well, not tax, debt exclusion, I should say. Let's correct that for the record, right? The debt exclusion will be there, and it, and that number is, we just don't know yet. Right, yeah, taxes will go up no matter how we, what we call it.
And we did a, a big, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I did a, we did kind of a larger shift last year against commercial than typically seen, right? If I remember correctly, when we went over it last year, we said, you know, we kind of favored more towards the residents and gave it a little bit more of a push than, than had been done in the past.
So last year, um, yeah, last year went from 1.47 to almost 1.6. So that was, that was a pretty good jump.
Yeah.
It was a pretty good jump.
So once again, we need to, we need to try and think of everyone here.
Right. Well, last year too, gonna think, we had that, that COVID bubble, right? Everything was so much higher last year based on what they were sell for during the COVID pandemic. So I think that's one of the reasons we shifted high. So this year, somewhere in the middle, because next year it kind of goes higher again because, again, the debt exclusion and everything else. But then again, offsetting that will be Stop &amp; Shop and Amazon and Copart and American.
See how it all plays out and into your point between the two things.
Yeah.
It definitely won't hurt it. This won't hurt it, right?
It's gonna be interesting to see what Stop &amp; Shop's personal property, because I can easily see the person who goes out to, to do what they call the collection. That's the information, the data collection for that, having to spend a couple of days at Stop &amp; Shop because that's, that's not gonna be, and people, we talk about the banana room and all that, and yeah, all the big equipment and machinery and everything, but in a commercial facility like a Stop &amp; Shop, they have conference rooms. This is personal property in a business. I mean, this, everything we're seeing right here.
Yeah.
So it's, it's gonna be pretty good check and change.
I also wonder, and complete side note, is how they figure out property value on a building that is half in our town, half in Fall River? Like, do they, are they literally walking in and saying, okay, this is the wall, this is the wall that divides, so everything on this side is.
So.
Everything on that side is Fall River.
For real estate, kind of in a way, for personal property, Amazon is responsible to report to both communities what is in both communities. So some things are gonna be fixed. Certain shelves are gonna be here. Certain shelves are gonna be there. The stuff that's on wheels, I mean.
Whatever's cheaper, they wheel it to that side.
All right, shift everything to that room.
And that's why I, I say it like, hardly, like, it's.
Yeah. And they did for, um, the first year, I'm gonna be honest, the first year was kind of a guess because they only reported to Fall River. They were under the impression that they only had to report to Fall River. So they reported there. They didn't report here. Fall River was nice enough to share the information with us, and we kind of had to parse it out as it was, but, um, they know now they have to file in both places.
Yeah.
Obviously, they weren't too concerned with the number we came up with because they didn't complain about it.
Yeah. All right, so any other input on this before we, uh, close this hearing and vote? No, I mean, yeah, so, and to be clear, right? I'm actually, we're actually voting on the residential factor.
On the factor, yes. So if the 1.62 is the number that you, uh, like, then you'd be pointing on the 8, or the .8353.
Right. Yeah, I was one below. I thought it was, all right.
Or whichever, I'm not trying to guide you.
No, 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 I was, I think I just circled it.
Yeah, it's because you, and you weren't trying to guide him, is what I had said, right? So it don't, yeah.
I was looking at the, uh, 1.6250 CPI shift.
Okay, the 1.6250.
Just the one below that, but.
Okay. Yep, so then that would be the, uh, .8340 is the, is the residential factor you'd vote on.
Yeah. You guys all right with that?
We're looking at the 8 point, .8340?
Yeah.
So 186 difference, 186.42 difference for the residents, and then 286 difference for our commercial?
Yep.
Versus the one above, which would be extra $10 and $40 in the other way? Yeah, I, I think residents this year, everything's so expensive, from groceries to heating.
I don't think it's an unreasonable, man.
No, I, I think it's, it's right down the middle, and it's, uh, common sense.
All right, so no one on Zoom? I don't wanna make sure I close the hearing. Jim Charlie. Mike, you all set?
I am, thank you.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, close the public hearing.
A motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. And then I'll move on to item four. So I'll entertain a motion to select the residential factor of .8340, to determine the percentage of tax burden to be borne by each class of property.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do you guys wanna close your, your? I think we're good.
Okay.
Nice, thank you.
A motion to close our meeting. We'll make a motion that we adjourn. Okay, motion made. Second. I'll second that. Oh, uh, Mike can second it. Where's Mike? Can you give me?
There he was on the internet.
You wanna second that?
Yeah, second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we'll take a roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
All, yes. Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Guys, great explanation of.
Oh, thanks.
Of all this. Thank you.
We should just record that for next year, and you should have that little. That little. Chat GPT with it.
Listen, he rehearsed that.
Put it on the website, because I'm sure someone will ask.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Good night. So moving on to, Jen, item five, is a discussion of vote whether to approve the disclosure forms regarding financial interests identified, um, by the special municipal employee form. And the employees here are, uh, Thomas E. Ashley Jr., Logan A. St. Louis, Samantha R. Carden, and Matthew M. Bones. And so, yeah. Anything to know on this one, Dub? Standard, right?
Yeah, these are just the employees that work multiple positions, dispatch. They'll fill in for dispatch when dispatch is short.
Yeah.
But they're, you know, police officers, firefighters that have started out as dispatchers and have the experience. And so sometimes when they have an off shift from their full time regular job, they will fill in on a shift for dispatch. So it's a benefit to the town to have somebody who's got the knowledge they have.
Absolutely. But these are important. I do know of a lawsuit recently, which, which this form, exactly, this exact form from this town came up, so it's good that we got. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the disclosure forms regarding financial interests identified by the special municipal employees listed before.
Oh, Mike, that motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right, agenda item six, this is open session minutes from eleven twenty, twenty twenty three. Any discussion?
No.
All right, with that, I entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from eleven twenty, twenty twenty three.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right, agenda item seven, this is discussion of vote whether to approve the twenty twenty four seasonal population increase estimate form required by the alcohol, alcoholic beverages control commission, ABCC. So the estimate will be nine thousand two hundred and thirty six.
Correct.
And thirty seasonal.
Big seasonal population, right?
It's amazing. I wonder, like, some places are probably like, like Nantucket, for example. Mostly seasonal.
The opposite of that.
All right.
So, yeah, so that's interesting because we have three liquor licenses right now, and that's what this is all based off of. And it normally ten thousand in order to get the third liquor license. So something done wrong many years ago, and there's three licenses in the town that really shouldn't have them. Yep. So it does, this does not, and the reason why I bring that up is this does not affect the amount of liquor licenses that Jimmy gone after in this town. So.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And I, I have to assume that this number will be going up in the next couple of years, but.
Yes.
All right, great. So with that, I entertain a motion to, actually, any discussion, sorry. Good?
No.
No. All right. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty four seasonal population increase estimates form required by the alcoholic beverage control commission.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Math- Matthews.
Yes.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
So next is related, but it's, uh, whether to approve the twenty twenty four renewal certification form for the alcoholic beverage control commission. Anything special there?
No, it just cites that anyone that did not fail, they failed to renew, or the board has disapproved the licenses, which we don't have either of those cases, but they still need the form signed.
Gotcha. All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty four renewal certification, uh, certification form for alcoholic beverage control commission.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right, agenda item nine, this is whether to approve the following twenty twenty four all alcoholic beverages liquor license renewals with M and H Juniors Inc. slash Juniors. It's A, B, Circle K, Store seven, five, one, eight, and C, K and E Liquors, Inc., DBA Cross Road Liquors. Any issues with those?
No.
No.
All right. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve, um, the listed license renewals for twenty twenty four alcoholic beverage liquor license.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Now we have a twenty twenty four wine and malt beverage liquor license renewals. And this is A, M and H Grandpa's Inc., B, Mason Road Food Mart Corp., and C, Neon Beverages LLC. Any issues with those?
No.
No.
All right. With that, I entertain a motion to approve the listed wine and malt beverage liquor license applicants for twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes, I'm making it difficult harder with the minutes, just changing the way I'm saying every motion, so I apologize for that. And next we have, uh, the twenty twenty four all alcohol liquor to be drunk on premise license renewals. We have A, Carsley, Carsley Inc., which is a ledge, B, Independence Harbor, Inc., C, Profile Rock, Inc., slash the Profile Tavern, and D, Freetown Memorial Post six, six, four, three, VFW. Any issues with those?
No.
Nope. Great places.
With that, I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, listed, uh, company, listed on premise liquor license renewals for twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right. Next up, we have the entertainment license renewal. So we have Independence Harbor, A, Independence Harbor, Inc., B, Profile Rock, slash Profile Tavern, and C, Freetown Memorial Post, six, six, four, three, VFW. Any questions or concerns?
No.
No.
So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the listed applicants for the twenty twenty four entertainment license renewals.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Agenda item thirteen, this is for the annual license renewals for, um, for jukebox and auto, jukebox and automatic device license, which is hilarious to me that you need a license for that. Uh, I know it's.
I guess it takes money. I guess it's.
Yeah, yeah, I get it. It's just.
But we do laugh at it every day.
So, yes, and this is for the Freetown Memorial Post, six, six, four, three, VFW. Any issues with that?
No.
No.
All right. So with that, I entertain a motion to approve the jukebox and automatic device license for Freetown Memorial Post, six, six, four, three, VFW.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right. Now we have twenty twenty four renewals for class two motor vehicle license. We have, uh, A, Armin R. Clermar, DBA Clermats Auto Garage.
Auto sales.
Auto sales. Uh, B, Roger L. Denell, DBA Bowler's Garage, and C, Base Equipment, Inc., base used cars, trucks and equipment. Any discussion on those?
No.
No.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the listed, um, companies for the twenty twenty four renewals of class two motor vehicle license.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. And agenda item fifteen, this is for the twenty twenty four renewal of class three motor vehicle license, and we have Donald F. Mendoza, Mendoza, Junior DBA DM Auto Enterprises. Any issue with that?
No.
No.
That'll entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty four renewal class three motor vehicle license for Donald F. Mendoza, Junior DBA DM Auto Enterprises.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right. Now, agenda item sixteen, this is a vote on possible use of four South Main Street for a pump station.
So this is the red building in the center of town. That's in ill repair. The selectmen have previously voted to try to sell this building. I think we got permission at town meeting to sell the building, but as we're going through the design of the sewer, uh, the sewer line, we need a location for a pump station. Previously, we've tried to buy the lot, the empty lot, to try to put it there. So at this point, I just want to make sure that, um, the selectmen are okay with it not going on the market until we at least get further down the line with the pump, with the sewer line, um, engineering, because I think we're going to need to put it now. When I talk about a pump station, it would go underground, so it would be something that.
You can still have a, a building, like, if someone does, well, sorry, let me think about this. Yeah, keep going.
So most likely, the building is going to need to come down sooner than later. And then the pump station would, could go underground, be submersible, so you wouldn't be looking at a pump station there. You could still make it something pleasing. You could put a facade around it, a building, if the towns are chose to. I'm not sure that that makes sense, but I just don't want you thinking to be this big, ugly pump in the middle of town. It could be submersible underground, and I actually have had pictures because I was looking at it for the other lot that we were trying to purchase, um, previously. So I just want to make sure that everybody was aware and, and that the selectmen were okay with that course of action for right now until we, if we sell it, then we're going to be looking for a place to put a pump station, and I don't know where we would. Because, you know, we're at the bottom of the hill right at the town hall.
Most common area.
It would have to go up. Um, we do have, we're working, you know, we have a couple of locations to do them on the other side of, um, towards the industrial park, but down there, that's really the only location the town has.
I have a question. So of the other lot, right? So we obviously went to town meeting, we tried to get money to buy that other lot for a bunch of different reasons. You know, parking as well as, you know, pump station. And access to the other building, which is another reason, but we didn't get that, right? If we were to get like funding some other mechanism, right? Say it was, say it was a grant, could we buy property with?
So you can buy property, but I, you can, you, you could use other funds for sure, but I think that the deed would still have to go before the town's people to be accepted.
Okay.
I think the town would be okay with accepting it if it's quote unquote free of charge. Right. My question for you is, um, historic society, they were very big on, okay, we can take the building down, but they want something back up that looks like it. Have we talked to them about it at all yet?
I haven't talked to them about this recently, but that's why I was saying you could almost, you could build a building with that facade to house the pump station if you chose to not put it underground, you know what I mean? So they're, it's just very preliminary. I just wanted to make sure, you know, I'm doing these things and thinking about what makes sense, but not necessarily always communicating. So I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. But speaking of the historical, they are the one committee that doesn't need permission that there, if they were to get a deed to something, doesn't have to go to town meeting, don't ask me why, but they have that, um, ability to do that. But then, of course, they're going to put all the restrictions on it that they want to, to control it.
It might be okay, though.
It's not necessarily a bad thing, but they would still have to get the funding from somewhere.
Yeah, that's, that's the problem, right?
I, um, I don't see why we wouldn't, why we would put it on the market at this point. It stands as quote unquote nothing at this point, right? Why, why take it down or do anything? Well, no, we'll take it down. We have to do that at some point, but why sell it off to find out then we need to buy a lot next door or somewhere else and pay that much more? It's just crazy to me. So.
I mean, in all reality, we could use our funds to purchase that, which is grant, you know, grant monies from the COVID. But then we would still have to go to town meeting and get it accepted.
Right.
We do have some other funds remaining. I'm talking about federal other funds because you know, there's different buckets of offer money. I still have some money in the opera, which sort of later. It has to be sent, it has to be declared of what you're going to spend it on by the end of twenty four. And then it has to be actually spent by twenty six. So even like this extension, the sewer line extension engineering, there's some other funds being used for that. I bet, like, I have to make sure everything's done by a certain date.
And I wonder, here's my other question is, is that land that that building is on right now enough to house the pump station? Or are we still going to have, we're talking about it and we're saying, okay, we want to use this for this, but then we still have to buy the corner lot in order to make it.
I don't, I believe it is, right? Because the pictures I've seen from them, and I can get you more information, there, it's not that big. Some, the submersible ones, not that big, but what I'd like to, I mean, we've got other things going on, right? The four corners, we're in the process of working on the four corners. We're going to do a mock roundabout at the school just to see if what they're proposing would work with some of the bigger trucks, the fire engine, school bus. Some of the businesses in town, K I Resendis has, has, um, agreed to, you know, bring in one of their low beds that they are concerned with to try it out. Let's, let's do a mock and see if this is going to work.
Yeah.
And if not, I mean, we may need to get some of the property on the corner. We may need more. So I think it's sort of like to be determined over there because I would love to see a little area that's cleaned up. Welcome to a sauna established in sixteen eighty-three. And maybe some park benches, because, you know, people do walk down and then they go to Hathaway Park. It'd be a nice place to say, hey, I'm going to just take a break for a second. So I think that there's possibilities there that would really benefit the town, would really look neat and nice. And we could still put our pump station underground, but a couple of bushes with the, you know, the vent that might come out of the trough or something. Maybe still even get a few parking spots that we need for the town hall in the short term. We're, you know, the, the town hall is a whole nother issue. You know, it's quickly becoming critical because we have no space. We have no space internally. We're on top of each other and parking is an issue. So I think, I think that right now where we're at, I just want to make sure we're, you know, that you're not all waiting for me to put it on the market and I haven't done my job. That you're okay with me holding it as we are evolving and trying to get, get some of this stuff.
I don't think we should make any rash decisions that we're going to regret later on, so.
No, it's like the purpose of us going to town meeting to get that, that corner lot, that corner property was to provide the town with more options for all the things that, as this town, whether we love it or hate it, continues to grow, move forward into the future. We needed options for things that you just discussed, whether it's a pump station, parking, park benches, roundabout. That's what the town needs moving forward, you know? Fortunately, we tried twice, it didn't work out. That's the town, the town's will, that's what we'll stick with. The red building, it's a different story, right? Is it an eyesore? Yes. Will it fall down on its own someday? More than likely, right? Based on the assessments and the reports we've gotten. At the end of the day, we do need options for the sewer line, because that, the sewer is key for this town to move forward, right? For the businesses, for the residents and everything. So that is one of the best options we have to date, because we own it, right? Unless by some act of God or some money falls into our lap, we get that corner lot. The red building is right now our best option, right? So leaving it off the market, it's probably the best, the best idea, right? And as far as the historical side, to Jared's point, I was going to ask the same question. What's their opinion? What's their thought? I know we've worked with them to get to where it is today, right? I know they want something up there that resembles, you know, what the building used to look like or what it looks like today. And I think that's still doable with the, all the options in front of us. So.
All right. So are we looking here for a vote or just, you know, is the vote for the possible use or for the use?
I think it was just, you know, I, I think for me, it's just more of a, you know, that I'm not putting, you know, massively not putting it on the market.
Yeah. I would say vote to hold it.
Yeah.
As town property.
Yeah. So, yeah, that's fine. I'll, I'll entertain a motion, yeah, to not sell for, not, not markless for South Main Street because of potential uses of pump station in the future.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Okay. And then, you know, we can always change that vote if.
Right.
If it comes to a reason.
Something changes.
Yeah. All right. And now this is, uh, just a contract between the town of Freetown and Industrial Communications for radio communications improvements. This is just.
This is.
Moving along.
Yeah, this is for the radio tower communication project. This is the installation of the equipment on the towers. And that's what this is. And just an FYI, we did get offer approval for the remaining money.
Awesome.
For the tower project.
That's great.
Congratulations.
Both leases have, yeah, both leases have been executed. This is now the contract for installation of equipment. I will be working on the purchase orders to order the remaining equipment, so we are moving right along with this.
That's exciting.
I love it.
All right. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between the town of Freetown and Industrial Communications for the radio communications improvements.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loeb.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right. Now we have, uh, agenda item eighteen, discussion of vote whether authorized town administrators sign contracts agreements of value up to three thousand dollars. contracts agreements of value up to three thousand dollars. I like where this is going.
Yeah, this is just procedural, right? We, we get little things, we annual renewals of maintenance contracts for five hundred fifty dollars. Technically, all the contracts need to be signed by the selectman. Um, and it just, it's, can be very procedurally heavy for us in terms of paperwork.
Hmm.
Um, so, as I said, it might be just easier if I can sign some of these things, just small, small contracts.
Yep. Yeah, it makes sense to me. Any, any discussion on that?
No, if, for those, the Hawks at home, she may be signing the contracts, but we'll still be aware of the contracts, right? There's no signing contracts and then it just kind of happens. We'll still be in the mix of things, but it just, this cuts a lot of the red tape of going back and forth. Um, so this is a good thing for the town.
Sometimes it's difficult to get, uh, you know, all three of our signatures, you know, someone's on vacation, something has to wait for, you know, so this just makes sense.
Correct. I, I, I agree.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, authorize town administrators sign contracts agreements of value up to three thousand dollars.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Slocum Loops?
Yes.
Slocum Zager.
Yes.
Slocum Matthews.
Yes. All right, Jen, item nineteen, this is discussion of vote whether to approve the flag and banner flying policy. Let me just pull up that policy. Yes. So this is something, you know, we've seen a lot of other towns have this policy, um, or a similar policy. And it's just to avoid any kind of confusion of. What we will and will not fly from a flag perspective on town property, so this just makes it crystal clear. Um, and we recently realized we didn't have one.
Right, I think this stems from a lot of what happened up in, uh, in Boston, correct? I believe this was something that they tried to fly or they, they got sued or something, some litigation that was there to make sure that, you know, if you're letting one flag fly, you let all the flags fly, and this clarifies what our stance is in that policy.
Yep.
Right? Am I, am I correct in that? Perfect.
Yep, exactly.
Perfect.
So I'll just read the policy. So the town of Freetown's flag poles and other town-owned properties are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public. The town may display the following flags as an expression of the town's official sentiments uh at town-owned properties. So the three are, one, flags owned by, uh, flags of government recognized by the United States. Two, flags in conjunction with official town events or ceremonies. And three, flags or banners in conjunction with official actions, ceremonial items, P O W M I A, military service of the uh United States of America, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Massachusetts, and the town of Freetown flag. So I think this should be pretty clear, and we don't have to, you know, get involved in any kind of controversies.
Right. Have you guys seen the Freetown flag?
Which one?
Well, that kind of. The, the one that's at the, the State House, the official Freetown flag?
Uh, I don't know if I have.
It's a, I, I say we, I say we get one up.
Oh, yeah.
Looks, looks pretty neat.
Absolutely.
Has a, has the profile rock, has like a cross on it. It's got a couple of things. It's a lot of historical monuments in town, and uh it, it's, it's pretty nice.
Awesome. Yeah, I'll definitely check that out.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the flag and banner flying policy.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Slocum Loops?
Yes.
Slocum Zager.
Yes.
Slocum Matthews.
Yes. All right, now we have two snowplow contracts for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Uh, Dennis D. Maraville Junior and Heath H. Chase. Any questions or concerns?
No.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve those, uh, two listed individuals for twenty twenty, winter twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four snowplow applications.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Slocum Loops?
Yes.
Slocum Zager.
Yes.
Slocum Matthews.
Yes.
Almost caught.
All right, personnel.
I was, I was waiting for, I was like, here we go. All right, thank you. Personnel, item agenda twenty-one, acknowledged the resignation of Emily Andores from the Cultural Council effective eleven twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Emily, for your service with the Cultural Council. Uh, item agenda twenty-two, discussion and vote on whether to approve the request for retirement incentive for Chief Harry Ashley Junior effective one, four, twenty twenty-four. For those at home, no, uh, Chief Ashley is now retiring today. Um, this is going out to when he retires in twenty twenty-seven. Um, that'll make, that'll put him at forty-two years of service at that point. So there are um provisions in his contract that, you know, um, it makes, it makes sense to start now, so that when he does retire, those provisions are in place and he retires and then uh, and there's no issues with the town or him, and everyone's happy moving forward. So um, in the, in the discussions, questions, concerns.
I got plenty of concerns.
They assure us that there will be a succession plan in place.
I only took somebody I seen the other day personally, so, so, yeah, no.
Um, yeah, and, and Chief, and the Chief is a planner by nature, so this is, um, you know, he, I think he wrote that in, in his letter to us as well. So this goes, this is, this is who he is, and this is how that whole department is. So uh, to, congrats to them to, uh, putting this in place ahead of time, uh, three years out. So make sure that someone is in his place. So good on them. Any questions?
Nope.
All right, I entertain the motion to approve the request for retirement incentive for Chief Harry Ashley Junior effective one, four, twenty, twenty, one, four, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slocum Loops?
Yes.
Slocum Zager.
Yes.
Slocum Matthews.
Yes.
So item agenda twenty-three is similar to, um, Chief Ashley. This is the Deputy Chief, uh, Neil LaFleur, and this is discussion and vote on whether to approve the request for retirement incentive for Neil LaFleur effective one, four, twenty twenty-four. Again, just like we discussed with Chief Ashley, this is a, a twenty twenty-seven retirement and, um, and it's just getting their ducks in a row, getting ready for that. So, um, that said, I entertain the motion to approve the request for retirement incentive for Neil LaFleur effective one, four, twenty twenty-four.
Make that motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slocum Loops?
Yes.
Slocum Zager.
Yes.
Slocum Matthews.
Yes. Thank you. You're off the hook tonight.
Sure. Yes.
And, uh, Deb, say twenty-four, you have a COA grant?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, let you know that Rebecca Frias, the director of the COA, applied for a grant for, to add a nutrition program to the senior center. She'll be serving, I believe, hot lunches Tuesdays and Thursdays to the seniors, and she applied for this grant, her first one, and she, she got the grant.
Wow.
So shout out to her.
That's awesome.
Just constantly looking for ways to improve their services to the seniors and food. Um, food is a big one for the seniors, because things are so expensive and it's difficult for them. So it helps with their socialization, where they're able to come to the senior center and have a hot meal, and she's gonna combine that with having a public nurse available in case there's any, you know, just a quick blood pressure, things like that. So there's gonna be a nice program for the town and for the seniors. So shout out to Rebecca for um, her efforts in getting that done.
Awesome. All right, great.
Yes. Good job, Rebecca. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rebecca.
All right, so anything else? I think we're good to go here. We just gotta do some signatures and then we will.
By some, you know, law.
Yeah.
I just.
Oh, yeah, this is gonna be a lot.
A lot of licenses.
Make sure I stretch out my hands here.
Start stretching.
That's one, right?
Slap into it.
Oh, yeah. That's me.
Yeah, I'm probably gonna give a shout out to the, uh, was it Cultural Council that did Lights On?
It was a great event. The weather wasn't the best, but the, it was a great event, so.
There's a lot of hard work that goes into that, too. Too bad that the weather wasn't cooperating, but they still.
It was still a good amount of people, and you know, it's funny, as we were talking about it, was the adults were underneath the canopies complaining, and the kids were running around, and they could kill us.
Yeah, it works.
A great thank you to them, because I know they do a lot of work, and, you know, we know they had a squirrel invasion this year, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, do you know, because of the squirrel invasion, maybe chipmunks, we don't wanna rule out any chipmunks. Um, are they gonna put the stuff back in the same location? Do we fix that problem as far as like locking up the, uh?
I don't, well, everything's up right now, so I don't know whether they'll store it after it comes down. We'll have to have a discussion with facilities.
It's kind of funny, not funny, but my brother had the same issue with all his Christmas lights. He had them out in his shed all back, and they got the squirrels going.
My, our furniture, the, like, it's like kind of wicker weave kind of, and they ate something. I think it was chipmunks, actually.
We painted the schoolhouse last year, and they, um, you know, fixed all of the rotten clapboards and whatnot, and then the squirrel ate right through the clapboard to get back in the building, because we had trapped the squirrels and brought them out.
Yeah.
And it ate right through the clapboard. Like, it's, it's incredible. And then one time, one of them ate the window, like, just ate the, the window, the, I don't know what you call it, the paint.
Well, they probably buried some of their, uh, their treats, their nuts or whatever, acorns, whatever they're hiding.
Yeah, they were, they were getting in.
The insulation, it's probably, no, I want that back.
It's like that.
So we had to replace it again.
It's like, worked very hard knocking those off the tree.
Wearing your armpit tied, holding all those things.
It's getting lighter and lighter.
You really do.
I have to give a shout out, because Lola did a lot of these licenses, which is a huge help, too, so.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Leave in the corner. Missed out on her first half of it. See it when she does the notes. Sometimes you say something with like two paper or something like that. This one has four.
Yep, I saw that. These, these little, uh, like tags are lifesavers. There's three of them on this one, and it'll be just, just four.
They missed, we got them all in there.
I might have missed one.
He's on it.
I just look for the yellow tags.
Yeah, you, we signed that one, and then I'm just sending that back to him for the.
I think they won't take this next one.
Yeah, of course.
The history of motor vehicles was fun, because they rejected one.
There's another place. Good luck with that one.
So this one is, um, the back two pages, yeah.
All right, I missed a bunch of this one.
You, two, and then two on the other, the same thing on the other one.
You say that word.
Three weeks from today is Christmas, guys.
No. All you guys do is your shopping. I haven't, I haven't started yet.
Why? Could you tell by the exaggeration?
Yeah. I struggle with it every year.
New balls.
I just, I'm not, I'm not shopping, then I decide those are Christmas gifts.
There you go.
Yeah. My wife does that. She's, she starts, I think, the next, the day after Christmas, she starts shopping the next year on certain things. Yeah, she's.
She's way more prepared than that. I just, my worry is always that I'm gonna buy something that will.
Is that okay?
Or wanted.
Yes, that's one of those regulations.
Oh, nineteen ninety. Gotcha. Just looks a little funny in my eye.
Back here, I'm doing that.
Say on top of this.
Sad of a woman, sorry. I'm happy for him, but I'm also sad.
I need to return a bunch of binders I have. I have a ton of binders in my house lately, past year.
Blue ones like that.
We'll take them.
Yeah.
If I need.
I told them that I.
Bring them all.
I had returned that I.
That's what.
They get them out of my. Did I, did I miss that one, Joe? That's where we both missed the same ones each time.
You guys are ready to go. See, she gives you the look at the end, so, so she says, shifts through it over the years, so you guys start learning.
We don't need to chase you down tomorrow.
That's right.
I think, I think we're good. I mean, I'll just, I'll put this right here, these. Yep, those, those were already, I think, right? Did you, did you hand this to me?
No.
No, I think those ones I signed, I signed.
Those are the ones she handed you that were just.
The first ones I signed, yeah. I don't wanna screw your pile up. Make sure I didn't miss them.
All the hard work. Lola, great job.
Okay, all right.
So with that. They all look good.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.